Do we have any comments on the left? For this budget, yes or no? Leave any comments on the left. Any comments to write? Any comments about the budget from the law? Why that there being no comments? Yes, yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to include in budget a 4% raise of COVID employees. That will exclude, the motion does exclude those who gave fundraisers at a lower 4%. They would be included in 4% raises.
Will be included in the budget? Please wait. All supervisors?
We had that problem, man. Is there more here? I don't hold the motion until you comment.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. All right. So, do we need our one, we don't need a motion to that? Or is the, is the drama session sort of the, the budget? Do we need to, or do we need one? All right, then your bottom line's number two is ordered out through the Mississippi County Budget and Lovers for FY2020. Second, discussion, all those in favor of doing that at the same time, all those on security. Number three, resolution, approve these budgets on COVID customers and victims, or is FY2020? And we have Mr. Newt Hogg here, who wants to say a favor?
Having answered any questions, I see the budget investigation was given. Said essentially, FY2020, we're projecting very fortunately, considering the COVID time, that overall, we will still end up at that profit of $2 million this year. We're very fortunate that most customers were not seeing that, but people did that. Our 2021 budget, we see the overall operations is to be at $4 million, overall property by $9 million.
That's good, thank you. Have a motion, second, discussion. Thank you so much for all the hard work, and we're not running short of any beds or any respirators, anything.
The standard of care for COVID patients growing on actually didn't require ventilators. So that sort of slowed down that process, so we were in great, we are in great shape. Our ICU is, our, our ICU is totally working, accommodating patients. But yeah, where, where do you think? And now you support?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, George. Okay, we have a motion, second, if any question, all those in favor will sit by, I think, now. All of those, motion carries. Thank you. Number five, order approval of the year's budget. Okay, man, I'm gonna leave you out, honey, I'm sorry. Order approval of the Mississippi Gulf Coast, uh, Gulf Coast policy budgets for FY2020, 2021, as presented by Matt. Second discussion, all yours.
Y'all know what we're dealing with. Our business won't be back solid until hopefully the end of the second quarter, 2021. We're starting to see more people renewing their contracts and calling us to get contracts for business in FY21. But most of us falling after February. We are feasting some events together this year. We're actually, as creative as it sounds, because it's a national tour. We're announcing a concert that we have on Front lawn, October 17th. It'll announce today, we're scheduled to hotel tomorrow. That makes no sense. We're pushing the hotel back to Friday. But we are doing other events. We're partnering with the Food and Beverage Association, creating outdoor, safe food and beverage event October 18th. And we're holding our very first fine arts show and sale first week in December. Some of our artists out, particularly our local artists, they have no place to go to sell anything. So, there are events that we're able to do. Some of our businesses that we've had have been very sporadic. Y'all know with the Supervisory Committee how sparsely attended that was. And we're gonna continue to see that well into first quarter next year. Money-wise, we're still operating out of our reserve funds. We feel that we can get through first quarter okay. We may have to come and visit y'all to get some help out of our restricted funds. We're trying very hard, Marlon, you know how I feel about that. I share your sentiments on that. But, I don't think y'all want to see the building shuttered. There's too many events that depend on that building. She talked random back here, I know she's hoping to have her graduation in May next year, cause it's safe. And there's no place she can have as many graduates as she has. So, with all that being said, we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, and we're doing it safely. We're not looking for events that want to come in and not follow protocol. And if y'all have any questions, I know y'all in a hurry today, because you got a lot of activity. If you have any questions, I'll come back and answer anything you want to know, and we appreciate your support.
I'll thank you. Have you answered? This, this during this time requires some adjustments, huh?
Well, I'm not coming, I promise you, I'm not coming until I have to.
All right, do you have anything else?
Um, yes, ma'am, we did, we reduced our workforce from 29. Two of them actually were scheduled to retire, so that helped a little bit. And they are in their retirement. And we then had to reduce from 27 down to 16. 16 is about as thin as we could run that building and continue to do regular business. Now, as we ran back up in the first quarter next year, we'll look to bring some of those people back that want to come back, or they are able to come back. But we will have to fill some positions as we get busy.
Man, I want to thank you for the, on behalf of the CDC Supervisors, because it was, it was very different, but it was well-attended. The people that were there, the chairs were six feet apart, and it was staggered, it was, it was amazing what you did.
It was a strangest convention I've ever seen.
I mean, I went in and I was set.
No, the setup. The setup. People are all, people are all fine.
Everyone had their mask on, everyone was separated.
Well, and, 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 there's a lot of mixed emotions about, about us being, doing the things that we're doing. But we are doing them safely, I can tell y'all. There are very few venues of our size in the country that are operating. They're all shuttered, and they're, and they're tremendous burden on many communities tax-based. We're not that, okay, we're certainly not that.
Do you have any idea what you saw at Tomlinson?
This year, probably too many. Probably close to too many now. But, if you look at our budget, you'll see that we, we estimated our revenues for next year very conservatively. And we're also having to rely on our outside revenue from rental to FEMA and Memorial Hospital, along with our interest on the restricted funds. That's what helps keep us afloat and able to do some of the things that we're doing. And we were able to hold on our, most of our employees for a long period of time.
Thank you for your, thanks for the work, we appreciate it.
Now, listen, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, man. Y'all see your package. Okay, the motion, second, discussion, all those in favor of doing that at the same time, all of those, motion carries. Number five, order approval of the Gulf Coast News College. You don't like hearing from the other person?
Motion.
Let's just go ahead.
Second.
Do you have any meetings and discussions, or is it, do you like to go to the guests?
No, we had a good year, and, y'all have a good year discussing the, between the committees, and the decisions of that.
Well, I'm anticipating that. And my second, all those in favor, too, by my thinking, I'll oppose, motion carries. Thank you so much. Do you have any comment?
Thank you.
It's written down, so can you check it for me?
He's on front door, I'll get him. He's on front door, shoot him.
Dr. May. We have a, we have a motion, second. I'm sorry. Number six, is order approval of the budget of the Gulf Coast News College. I'm gonna type this all, because it's pretty right there. Good morning, everyone, I know y'all in a hurry, y'all have a lot of businesses, tend to be a hurry, and kind of happy. I do want to just share a couple of quick things, again, I know you're in a hurry. But we found out last week that we were named the number one community college in the state, so we should, I thought. And, you know, I tell people often, we want to be number one in the state, but we really want to be number one in the nation. We are, and we are in the top 100 cities in the nation, 1,200 community colleges in the nation. And we are in the top 120. So, we try to maintain that, because we want you all to be proud of the work we do for the people in Harrison, Jackson County, Georgia County. We are maintaining our enrollment, we are adhering to all the CDC guidelines. We will continue to enroll, you can get a full load in September, October, and November. So, our enrollment is continuing. We're doing something called HiFlex. Where students, on any given day, can come in, go to class, and, again, receive a heart, mask required, or they can stay at home if feeling sick, or they just don't want to come to class. So, it's called HiFlex, it's working beautifully. We're doing HiFlex enrollment as well, as I said, so students are continuing to enroll, so they can have time. The good news is, we did get some COVID relief money. And so, we're able to put on the ground over $2 million in workforce training at intercharge to students who are wanting to come in in career technical arena. So, we're doing a lot of that right now, we have to get it done by December, so we're moving really quickly. We're partnering with Mississippi State, we have three programs right there on Mississippi Gulf Coast, we're partnering with USM. Basically, we'll partner with anybody that can bring resources to the table for our students. Our bond projects have been delayed just a little bit because of COVID, but we're moving forward on those. We have started some new programs, cyber security on our Harrison County campus, it's huge. We have a brilliant piece there in Mississippi State. We're building a huge cyber security facility to handle that. We're doing unmanned, we're starting a physical therapy system, no problem.
It's fine.
You're getting, you know, I'm trying to get it out to the next person.
It's storm, so it's a bit nice.
You need to hear everything I'm saying. I guess the bottom line is, we're continuing to remain strong with your support. We have 10 locations, as you know, and six of those are in Harrison County. So, I know I have a footprint here in Harrison County. We're trying to maintain a strong institution, continuing to serve the students. I know the sheriff is coming forward in a little while to ask for support, and I want to endorse his support. We're a big partner, Sheriff's Program, and I know they reached for a grant, and there's a match. And so, Sheriff, I would say, support whatever you're asking for today, because we do need to train all of our police officers and deputies and all of that, in Harrison County.
What is your relationship?
We have Sheriff's training happening, we're a partner in that.
How's that gonna affect you with these buildings, or what?
We'll actually steal all the credit for them. Sheriff's County? For students who want to turn that non-credit into credit?
Yeah.
We do now, and we'll continue to do that. So, he did not say that, I might do, I want to know, we're a supporter of Andrew's. We do share some of those efforts, so. We're trying to maintain, trying to maintain the quality, level of quality by offering credit for those programs that are offered.
Yes. I have one question on your technical, do you have a apprenticeship with that? Because, I think, reading it is great, but if it's technical, going out and deal with apprentice program?
We have apprentice programs, we have electrical, and plumbing, and air.
Those, great question. Apprentice programs are initiated by the ministry that we work with. And we have 14 apprentice programs, and we have a little shit building. We got a piece of federal credit meeting, we're about to start one, a more of a left, with Memorial Hospital and all the healthcare occupations. So, yes, we do have apprentice programs. And again, apprentice means they pay students to work while they go to school. And so, it's sponsored by an industry that we're a apprentice for. I would just add that you reach out to small businesses who are suffering because of lack, because of COVID, or have lack of employees. And so, if you could reach out to some of the small businesses that are struggling with health employees, do make it like, think of benefits, think about, think about.
We do a lot of that, and the great news about small businesses, we can couple four or five businesses together and run non-credit, training programs for credit, and draw down funds for the state to pay for them. So, we do a lot of that, depends on the business. If we're aware they have a need, then we do reach out, you know, try to help them. So, we've got a lot of new programs, we're trying to do everything we need to do, we need to continue. We really need your support. We did not ask for percentage increase this year because of COVID, you know, everybody's struggling. We'll take one if you want to give it to them. We do hope for the growth, as we do every year. But again, we have six of our locations here in Harrison County, so we really do need y'all to continue to stay supportive and help us with, with everything we're doing. So, we're trying to build facilities, and educate students, and do it on the down, so that's what we did. Thank you so much, thank you. Again, I have a motion, second.
Thank you.
I have a motion, question, next.
Discussion, only discussion that I have, is recognizing that even college is such a critical, critical component of our economic development in this county and in this state. So, we appreciate the work y'all do.
Thank you.
To a critical, one test and decimals.
I agree. We also thank you in the air. They did. Uh, we have all those, if I have seen them, they may not. All those, so, here, you know, seven, the order of voting, Harrison County. Good district for FY2020, 2021. Second, discussion, is there anyone here who has anything to elaborate on the, for name?
I did, I did want to say, though, it was a decrease, there was a decrease in it, in the middle, it's a .73, you know, it should decrease.
And we are mandated by statute to approve their vote. All right. We have Raper here, I was about to ask Raper to come up and give us a little clarification. And call them, just, all those things, um, out of the call.
So, if everybody can hear me, of course, I brought with me Angela Hasen, the signed documents that I ran before you, asked people, the local proclamation, going back to yesterday morning, for that, Angela here is the governor's state of emergency. That was issued, on that. The designate, of course, made to request assistance out of the state. We have been requesting assistance out of the state. Some of those assets are already in play. The citizens appreciate sandbags, and they're still due diligence in getting those. The area coordinators are in play, that we're using at the EFC. Got some military, police here in route to help us with little presence patrols, shall we say, with a small Padre, or high water vehicles also, to, to put into play. They'll be arriving sometime this afternoon, I have not heard the date. A swift water team has been requested, I think Pat's already received those, and been in contact with it. We went ahead and, we might have done this in 15 years. We did ask for a stand-by, urban search and rescue team, also the aftermath of the potential storm asked for. And, you know, as we've been saying for the last three, four days now, it's going to definitely be a water event. As you drove, coming to the meeting, you drove in Highway 90. We anticipated reaching the Southbound lane at Highway 90, 6 o'clock tonight. May actually be just a tad bit earlier, looking at some of the low spots, so, all our first responders in the cities are anticipating that. And those tropical force winds, and, and everything we pushed out, we were looking at. Probably no one later than 8 o'clock, seeing those come in tonight. We may start to see some of those heavier gusts before that, looking at how this particular storm is doing, 10 o'clock advisory, will be coming out. It is showing an intensity from Hurricane Hunter, that's what I was looking at, as I sat down just a little bit. So, it jumped from 4 to 7 o'clock, the guy is in 5 miles, and now it does look like it is getting a better center circulation developed. So, we might be changing, saying we're looking at hurricane Sally in the very, in the future. Now, still a slow move. The concerning part is, of course, still water, and, of course, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Rocker. We have been talking about where's the water level in those properties for the last several days, and the water levels keep coming.
The national weather.
So, yes, the water is coming in the backface, in the rivers. So, with the hurricane warning, with the storm surge warning of 11 feet, add 2, or 2.4 feet on that, so that's 13.4 feet. Two high tide cycles that the water will not receive. Rain values could be in the feet, which is classic to what we saw in Isaac. Dr. Lattner, that was, that imposition we had with Wolf River didn't want to go down for almost a week and a half. We shut off one of our main corridors in the west part of the county. Just got the news, got it to y'all, that was part of my update this morning, getting over here. Shigeru Buckman forecasted 18 feet, what stayed for that river was 8 feet. Lexi River on the lower end, Pat, Sheriff, I know it didn't mean anything worth them yet, but, 19 feet, cresting Wednesday night, Shigeru Buck cresting Thursday morning. Wolf River, 15 feet, Thursday PM on that one also. That is based right now, maybe a lower end of rain. And talked to the new director of the river forecasting center for our area. She said, you know, we may be upping this. And I said, that's fine, we just want to get the warning out to our people. With that being said, on top of asking for, first, I guess, a local proclamation, going back to yesterday, if, if we could do that, we'll go through steps, because I got a couple other things I gotta do.
You have copies of this?
Uh, yes, same as that has all the copies. Okay, oh, yes.
Or you can read the end of the mission, whether you prefer.
But one time I did not bring my glasses into the, the meeting. This is what.
We have a local proclamation of the existence of local emergency by Florida Supervisors. Whereas, here's the county supervisor chair, that finds that conditions of extreme peril or of con safety or certain things in property have arisen within said county caused by tropical storm Sally, regular flooding, flash floods, and tornadoes, and storms are commended on, or about 7:00 AM on the 13th day of September 2021, I mean, 20 and, in case of conditions of extreme peril warrant necessity for the proclamation of existing local emergency in order to provide for the health and safety of the citizens and protection of their property within the affected jurisdictions. You have a motion?
Yes.
Second, second discussion, all those in favor receiving call, may not, all of those, motion carries.
The second is the designation, and I hate to trick up, my deputy director is under the corner.
I heard, I heard that yesterday. Saturday, one day, my day's ruined, yeah. Resolution requesting the government governors to proclaim a state of emergency. Whereas, on September 13th, we need more supervisors in Harrison County, and to the impact and in the threat of tropical storms and conditions of extreme peril of life and property did exist in Harrison County. Whereas, on September 13th, 2020, Mississippi State Law 13, 33, 15, 17, there are supervisors claiming that emergency does exist throughout Harrison County. Whereas, it is a cloud, the local resources are unable to cope with the effects of all state emergencies, and therefore be declared and ordered that a copy of this declaration be forwarded to the governor's presidency with the request that his people plan in Harrison County to be a state emergency, and if it is further resolved, that River State, like the director of emergency, that the nation is hereby dismembered, to authorize that the city of Harrison County, for the purpose of, if it purposes is.
And like I said, he's already done, actually, already.
Second.
He, he has, and they have not waited around to do what they need to do. We are moving forward. With that, there's two things, one about work, safety of employees and all that. I still feel that we can complete today's operation as normal. And, and what is going to be normal is that every building in Harrison County that is under county control, and I think the cities and businesses are doing the same. Be buttoned up the best, and use any resources, if they're in oil line area or whatever, that their sandbag, computers are shut off, all of that is kind of taken offline to protect from when the power service will probably sit. And then, of course, rising water, unfortunately, that I think we will see. And keeping the employees, the safety of the employees are non-essential. Unfortunately, I hate to say typically, maybe it would be normal one day, but looking at Sally, be a tropical storm hurricane, I think we're gonna have a gruesome two days of having to deal with this storm.
So, you think 8 o'clock tonight will start seeing wind?
I guess I'm.
Have been 20, it's storm actually here.
It's. Probably starting to feel the heavy, truly sustained winds after midnight, probably hurricane force winds. 8ish in the morning, going on probably until midnight, and then tropical force winds. Wednesday morning, I'm hoping by noon time we can get out and do damage assessment, so waters will not be gone. We're trying to capture first, as of today, of getting people back to clean up whatever it is that we're dealing with.
River, evacuation.
That's my next one on. You know, and I haven't covered y'all on that in a long time. But, I just, you know, I, I publicized, and Sheriff and I kind of talked briefly early on, you know, I knew Highway 90 would go under, I said 6:00 PM. I may be off by that by two hours, from what I've seen already, which led to Harrison County School District going into a 6, 60% day. They get the school buses, where they need to get, get them back into, into the safety of the school.
They sit on soon today or tomorrow.
Today.
So, we're about to evacuate, where to see?
Uh, I would also make the recommendation that at 1 o'clock, we do a mandatory evacuation of low line areas to include the seawall, that way we can keep people off the beach. I don't think the sheriff's gonna arrest anybody, but at least we can holler at them, be at the, tell them to get off. And that means that we're queuing in the shelters in a tiered fashion. And that means that we're queuing in the shelters in a tiered fashion that we will have them ready to open up at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 on the 3361s. And have the next level ready to go 4:30, 5:00. And remember, we're having to space and distance people, which is, we've been planning for, we did not, we did not want to do that.
Have you talked to the county commissioner?
Yes, ma'am, I have. Some of the properties have already self-initiated. They were, you know, with this, it's a cut and dry deal, and they, they're all, they were all prepared for us to do this. But anything on highway 90 and those properties for sure are one that is built in. They are actually flooding it now because of the backwater, and it could actually topple over the backwater, which we are, he is already flooding their, their water. Yes, sir.
Just for some verification, I, I'm not sure I get it, supervisor, but when you say low line area, I get caught on that. When you say low line areas, sometimes it's confused to something. Can I say that's the thing, a flood zone, a bad area, or if you're talking south of the seawall?
Well, to include south of the seawall, yes, sir. But any one of it lives by a river, creek, street, yes, yes, sir. Which is. Yes, sir. And, and you have a lot of areas, you know, your district is part of the Turkey Creek and then the Flat Ranch and all of that. And this way, we've got the E D H S standing by, actually, they're going, they've got their teams getting ready to go out. We're meeting the Red Cross. They're positioning the Red Cross, ask us if we could stagger, but we would have everything ready for CTA to run the buses for those that need that transportation, get them to that shelter and get those buses off the road before 6:00 also.
What time does the shelter be open?
We would do the first one at 2:00.
That's what I, I didn't want to stay stunned out in the city.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It would be the 3361s. They're adjusting the void road because we get the multipurpose. Ms. Unison and them are adjusting there with, with.
Senior says.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, you know, we have to try to give them as much as 10 feet, as much as we can, which are definitely limits how many people we can put. And typically, we would do more. This is not that typical situation. And as the rains start to pick up and trying to get people off the road before 8:00 to 9:00, when it does start to, we do start to see the winds pick up and probably start to see the rain setting up.
Once you see shelters, once you have the overflow from the 361s where.
We'll go into the second phase, which are the 2361 high schools and then Harrison Central High School, which is hard now.
West Harrison?
Uh, West Harrison, the Opera Vale are the other two 361s. And then that overflow in the central part would be Harrison Central High School. It is, it's a FEMA. It was built to FEMA standard. It is a, it is a hardened building that should withstand major hurricane force winds. And FEMA just recognizes that that's a, their code is 361. Yes, ma'am. Hardened, hardened buildings that we actually have more square footage that were built to, to a greater standard than regular buildings. You know, it's as great capacity in a non-COVID environment.
And one more question. When do you expect us to go to South?
Just. I really don't know. To truly get Pete out, I'm going to say something tomorrow afternoon. Yes, ma'am. And, you know, I'm, that also is based on how much rain falls, falls, that our, our drainage systems, the cause of the bay right now, and if we're seeing on the rivers, the ditches are starting to build across the rivers and the bays are starting to build. And this is not rainfall. So if the rain will fall, it will have no place to go except to spread out. And that's why we're, we're scared to death. We don't want to lose anybody's life because of water. And this is, this is definitely going to be that event that is, is going to be very hard on the responders, the public works, red department, fire department, law enforcement, sheriff's department, and those entities that are trying to help us, but.
River, are they also taking into consideration the massive amount of destruction that is taking place in all the.
We, you know, we, we, and I say that because y'all have felt on that in, you know, years ago, which we were very intent on how we did our evacuation map, trying to think to the future. But, you know, some of this new is going to be stuff that we're going to have to capture for the people to follow this to, to go and prepare for the, the next one. So this, this is really going to be a challenge.
Any more pertinent information that we might be?
Well, if, if, you know, if y'all can do the, the closure and Ms. Pam. Because once that does, the funds will start, I know, I know Jeff's listening, so that would be a closure for tomorrow. Closure of county buildings, non-essential. And Red Department is working. And I want to say that the governor was supposed to take care of putting in any order of the courts and all of that. Without my glasses on, Angela, you see y'all, Chancellor and all that under that order. Because he has to do the state of emergency, which he did, and we've asked him to make sure there's no difference. But this is a life peril. Chancellor, no business should be conducted in the courthouses tomorrow and probably Wednesday. Everybody go home, hunker down.
Do we have a motion to close all county buildings except them and employees to stay home, except for non-essential employees?
Except for non-essential.
Except.
Except for essential. So only have motion precedent, but only for Monday at times. Do tomorrow. So non-essential will go home and essential will stay.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And we'll readdress it about Wednesday.
And how do you want us, because y'all do that, and I don't need y'all traveling either or.
But I'll be, I'll be.
Okay. Every weekend out. Today is Monday.
I generally in the past, you've allowed the county administrator to determine, otherwise you don't have anybody to say you come, you know. Last order we did this term, unfortunately, we did that. So county administrator determines, I don't use that order. We have somebody that's.
Is most of it as part of the order or?
They included orders of somebody, but we're going to determine if this person makes a decision.
Order will ring that county will be closed tomorrow and that essential personnel will only be working and that will be decided by Pam Olver, our county administrator.
And then I would ask on the mandatory. Mandatory evacuation of the low line areas to include the seawalls and get people off.
That they said for that's correct. Yeah, for that, that much, and the second, the first one, it's talking about flooding the building, the 11th, the second, all those effects, you know, I cannot oppose motion carry. Our second motion will be, or order will be.
Mandatory evacuation, including seawall.
Seawall side.
Seawall side.
Yes.
That will be a mandatory evacuation starting at 1:00 from seawall south.
Yes, ma'am.
To seawall south.
And low line areas that are deemed flood areas if flood under high water.
And others in floodway?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion at 1:00 today.
And I, I know we'll get to Jack on that, which we should have. There are some areas in those that are high, but, but that means that responders can't normally make response entries. So emergency response is, is going to be limited and very slow over the next couple days.
Communication to our citizens. I know, too, Red Dresser had excellent point when he say low line areas. And I know anybody who lives in a river knows the low line areas, but that's not good enough. We need to have something, someone moved here from California or whatever. They need to go and say, do I live in a low line? Do you have that?
Our evacuation maps are actually, if you overlay, you look at it, that is the FEMA flood map and more often. It is on the website, yes, ma'am.
But is it a big? Is it easy to go click? I'll talk with Jeff. But it is there, we just need to put it in the forefront.
Yes. The, the red areas are the primary flood area.
No, no, what she's asking is, and I know he's, I looked it up last night and he's not.
So you mean start?
Okay. And like I said, we will, we will have the first shelter open by 2:00. If not ready to open before, but we are, yes, sir. Will be ready to take residents. We know we will have some outside of county residents, maybe some outside of state residents, but we are not going to turn, you know, anybody away from seeking shelters. If you get away from war.
Through the by, the mandatory at 1:00 in the afternoon. That's very quick for people to move their, involve their things, their cars and trailers and whatever. There won't be any penalties for those.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
It will take some time for.
You know, and the message is that we want people to be hopefully safe and hunker down no later than 6, 8:00 P.M. And that's to keep back, it's dark by then, and that's when tree leaves, tree limbs could be blowing around or power lines could be leaning over or things like that.
That needs to be stiff.
No, no, I don't, there's, there's, I don't think there'd be a responder one, and I all refer to the sheriff on that. There's no responder or one that would be trying to send us.
Mandate that, this is, I don't like the word mandate, because that implies.
You said mandatory evacuation out by 1:00. That's going to be here, that's going to be some panic street and people.
Well. If they choose, we, there's, there's really no, there's no way that we can, we can arrest them, and we have dealt with that in other counties and states have dealt with that over the years. Louisiana is doing it right now. And, you know, we know we have property owners that will be like their property.
Could be the volunteer right hand or against.
I, I think we need to send a message stronger than that because of this water. That, that is telling them that we do see that this is life threatening. I mean, the weather service and hurricane center have been saying this is life threatening, but that does send the life threatening. And, and the board did, and Miss Conning, as Black the Lattner, y'all struggled with that one, the training. You know, finally it was, but we.
The door to door.
But, yeah, you know, that did get people's attention then.
Two points, all right. Okay, I have two questions. Is there going to be a curfew? Y'all considering a curfew?
Right now, it's, we are, but, but it'll be a later time.
Okay. And the other question is housing the horses, how we normally do the horses at the fairgrounds for people who need to, you know, bring their horses that are in the low line areas or in the, in the danger zone. So we, you've already had some?
We, we've already had a request for eight horses.
So, and we, and the other thing is, do we waive the child?
So you're going to just waive any, any, all horses in low line areas that need to be evacuated? And how many, how many can we, how many, what's the capacity we have here?
Capacity, well over 2, 300. We have plenty of stalls, but.
They just have to bring now, you know, make sure they bring in their.
If you bring their own food, and they bring their own shakes.
Do they run the.
Our, our, what about, uh, that?
Uh, we would, under that schedule, we'd be using Harrison Central High School. Yes, but, you know, and we've talked to the Red Cross about this. If somebody comes up at the 9:00 hour and has their animal crated, we're not going to turn anybody. You know, it's got to be crated, and they've got to have their own food and all that. Try to keep them separated. But it's the same way, you said, we're not going to turn anybody away that's trying to get, get to shelter.
You will have that information available as.
Yes, ma'am.
The animals will go and then where.
Yes, ma'am. Now, Red Cross doesn't like to have animals, but we did it one storm back a couple of years ago that we had some, you know, we're not going to turn anybody away. And we have tried to, you know, post and let people know that's a non-convent. Try to find your own job, but this is very pet friendly in that way, you know.
So is there anything else that we need to know, we need to cover, or we need to make a word on?
As of right now, no. And, and, you know, I always link to the sheriff and the chief law enforcement officer about the, the curfew side. We have just tried to tell them, get off the road at night, hunker down, and be ready to hunker down for several days.
Okay, so at a later back, we'll talk with the sheriff about curfew. Thank you, River.
Uh, one good note.
Yay.
On the hair side of the house, the hair's money that the state had allocated to Harrison County made him $86,000 in change. As of today, Harrison County has submitted right at 2.5 million dollars into the hair's act under salary for two pay periods for countywide. Well, sheriff, we got any yours in here, actually? They didn't have yours ready for me. We'll get that in hopefully today or tomorrow. The technical side of equipment stuff, PPE that was ordered and all that. So we are still loading up the blue side, which is public assistance, preventive measures under COVID-19 disaster. And $160,000 applied for in that. So we, we estimate, reports all said, no, and we probably do get three, three and a half million dollars. So we have checked the box on the red side, and we also requested of, of the House and the State Senate to those entities that did not or had not applied, missed a deadline and all that, maybe they'll give more money back to those that happened.
Speaking of that, so we did not receive that.
We did not receive a check, yeah, no, ma'am. But we have met our obligation to, to get that done by the 15th of October.
Speaking of that, I know we, we are, there's something in the D or the T of this. Anybody heard anything? Speaking of that, I know we, or something, either of the kids of this, anybody heard anything?
Yeah, we met with them on Friday, Rupert, Jennifer, myself, and Trish, to go over the projects. Well, we have already met, but we were allocated a million eight zero eight six thousand. So those projects were that, we sent a message back to them to tell them to look for other avenues, because we already had some million dollars. So they're supposed to be looking at other grants and some other, and some other things, if we have to get additional funds.
So they were not looking for anything except the payroll?
No.
It was my impression and according to their newsletter that they put out, they were supposed to look at all grant-related activities and identify any grants that the county made.
They are, they are looking at some more, this was just the money that we got allocated for the care practice, because it was already. So there was more additional ones.
So they have some, and they're looking for more?
Well, they didn't find, no, this money was allocated to the county already, so they didn't have to go after it. They didn't have to go after it, there were projects, but we already had our two point five million up on it, already in the system.
Let's see Rupert.
I'll be getting y'all latest in the Florida, we're going to quickly like to get that, so. More than that, Hurricane Center just shipped the high passes to the east of us. Going up to Mississippi and then turning towards, looks like point of pass through. That's good news. A little bit. He turned sadly. I don't wish you don't have anybody.
Ma'am. Joel Schramm, yeah.
I don't see enough of that, Rosa.
Do you see, um, Cooper, Sabrina, there, there, they're here. There she is.
That's the same one.
That's the same one, and I emailed you that, I don't know if it went through, I was driving, I was in my car, and I emailed you that. That letter is just way too long, so what we needed is more specific, of that thirty thousand dollars that y'all didn't put in, and the labor that you're requesting from us. That was shit, I could hear last one. Okay, I'm sorry.
So not the first one, that we relocated four and co-op institutions of people in order to give you more space. You never indicated that we would like to accommodate them all, that was never mentioned. When I say you, I mean child advocacy center. So having said that, you know, really with Joel's experience, he said he had funding to bring them in, for the boat time, any of his fund rates. So I was just curious where that funding is, and my personal issue with this is, we have our guys working on it. And I am not comfortable in having to stop everything they're doing to ugly model child advocacy center. I realize it means it, but at the same time, we're not even done with the flexibility of it. So you know, we got some priorities that may not be the same as yours. And then your letter said that you had a two hundred and something thousand dollar grant, this is what your letter said, that you wanted to use for salaries. Is that correct?
That is not correct. Okay, so I wasn't originally a part of the letter, so I would like to better explain that, well, I explained it right now. So that two hundred was a modification, so I did a qualification of unused portions of that grant. And so we wanted to allocate that those unused portions to salary, to equipment, to renovations. It was not just for salary.
You're talking about allocating a portion of grant money to salaries?
Unused portions.
Be very careful with that.
It was originally for salary, but because we didn't have that staff, we had to model for that.
You understand?
Well, I'd like to explain, if it's above the grant, it is allowed, so is it above the. So salaries are specifically.
I'm not questioning whether it's legally allowed, I know we can do, we're done with all some other things. Just be prepared that once that grant is out gone, you've got those people employed, you have to a budget form or release or go.
That was already in the script, I'm sorry, my name's Mike Johnson, I'm the district manager for County Social Solutions. So neither myself nor Sabrina were on, you know, in a position that we are now at that time, when the original broker agreement was admitted. But with that being said, the salaries were included in the initial grant. So they were already included in there, with also some renovations, items for materials, so. Labor was not included in the initial grant.
I think what the board is concerned about is if you, is it used the grant money to help the workers they have? Do you get the grant year?
Yes.
So every year we get the two hundred thousand dollars covered here for that, so that won't be a recurring cost. And then for the renter, if we get back up this month, and you get your name and your worker's exit bonus for the renter.
I'm Saturday Marley, I'm the new program director for CAC in the fourth, and also thank you guys for allowing us to be able to sit in our services. This is the top of the building, that's twenty-three fifteen Seventeenth Street.
And I'm Boni Johnson, I'm the district manager of the South District for County Social Solutions.
Now, Ken, for say.
Funny, he's asking, this district attorney is asking to table.
Well, what he asked us for originally was to relocate those two deployments to.
What he's asking us to table, so.
Why is he asking us to table?
I don't know, but that's what.
Y'all table just from the way I was saying, we have a table. The building needs to be moved minutes, you've got turnpike damage, the windows are cracking and falling. Children are running.
That's all, that's no different.
Was that, uh, this supervisor?
On the Seattle side, you get this every year, just have to dump it, then the county have to.
County doesn't, the county doesn't fund them, we only provide them, we only come out with the office. Yeah, they give you the rent.
I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so we're good on that. And the next thing is, on the renovation side of it. I mean, I haven't spoken with district attorney, but I would imagine if you have an opportunity to get the renovations done with the grant, be much worth it to definitely money we have to go table, but yeah, we could have something else.
But he said that, that was Joel's. My only issue with all of this is that you want to use county labor, and this job is gonna be huge, and it's gonna cost a lot of money on the labor side and time, and I don't want to see our guys get pulled off what they already got to do, to do this. So my point was, do you have enough money that you could go hire a contractor? That's what I was suggesting.
Originally, it was absolutely the labor from the county, but we just want that labor to be renovated. Because we own the county building, we just want to be granted that, uh, the labor to renovate the building. Now, first in the boat times of the eight, I mean, we did see, I met Ms. Riley, and she wanted to offer assistance on our private building. But we do have that grant money for the renovation on the side of it.
And that includes your labor?
That, if we have to get that labor, yeah.
Because it's hard to really justify, when I've got offices upstairs, over here, quarters and upboard, that still do not have flipside access to it, like with this COVID deal. And these are guys who are really hard, and they don't have a second, they're very.
Right.
Very accommodating, but at the same time, it's just kind of.
That's understandable, and you know, we have also had some volunteers, also as well, so, and it really is mostly to assist with the painting. Not to actually assist with any structural work.
So you're just asking permission to renovate a building? And those ones are all, thank you for your honesty, and we appreciate that, we appreciate what you're doing, Mr.
Want to come in to make sure that I'm bad, to get follow, do a follow track first of all, and contract laws.
So yeah, well, so we'll need some type of plan of what y'all, you know, what you're doing, if you're taking walls, if you're taking walls down, or putting walls up, so we have code office coming in.
Okay, we'll get that on my question.
And do we submit that to you?
Yes. I would check with some of the contractors, they may have a package right off, and that would be perfect if we can approach the contractor, we see how they're handling it. I have one last question, he's on the record, how much would you estimate money that you save the county each year by doing forensic interviews and servicing? How many children do you service each year personally? How do they save you money?
I can spend, we serve all, we serve it's all, second, third, and fourth, but we also, um, training for them there.
We also do um, training for them there. We do court collections for our child with advocates. And then we have the, we have the, we have the CPS, the Michigan Department of Services report, and.
So these are extremely expensive services that we had. So I'm just making a point. And that's totally fine, I'm just, all of my heroes, and that's a small group of heroes that, you know. And to offer a little labor, I would like to go on the record that I am a hundred percent for that. Window still is crumbling, but anyway, thank you. We just want to make it a more child training and family, more.
I have been there, and it's wonderful, which is what we done so far.
We got a reasonable budget, getting included. Things like that, materials, like here are the items, um, where the office is, um, so it gets detailed, you know, that's who I'm like.
Some people are pretty. They do say it's funny, I don't know.
Take off on what?
They're reluctant and all.
Take off on that. Okay. Take off on that. That's things. I agree with her, and I think what we need to determine, what kind of time are we talking about? Do you have any idea how much labor you're going to need and the time it's going to be? Time to get this labor for exactly eight hours? Sixteen a week, two weeks? So, uh, you know, if we're a limited amount of time, I don't see that as an issue.
So I don't have a time, but I do have a schedule.
And I think that's probably why, uh, District Attorney said he probably wanted to table it until he had that information. You know, did he know we were going to consider taking this off the table or nothing?
We had to take it off the table, that's the problem.
It's on there, so I have to consider taking it off that table. Was he aware of that?
Superbarnister Jones, jump in there, watch it quick, because everybody's talking about it.
What else can I figure out? Like what Superbarnister, what I'm saying, I got kind of, I am, any kind of services that can save you some money, not much, pay them back. So what I would suggest is get with our services director and see what his priority, other kind of work. He receives, other kind of, he receives it. But it doesn't, if you only need eight hours of work or need two days, like Superbarnister saying, maybe they, they may sit down for a while.
Sit right around. Our facilities director does not work for these places. They work for Pam. So you need to give Pam and let Pam go.
Well, that's fine.
I would not jump over her, and that's what I see.
Well, that's not what I would do. We're getting technical, I understand that. I'm just saying, I'm from a technical standpoint, you correct, but I'm saying a lot of facilities directors tell you what their priorities are, and that's clear from us. If they can squeeze in, and they will, they can, they won't, but obviously, you have to look at the kind of ministry. Now, I wouldn't try to overstep him. I'm just saying, give those guys a chance, give them a report of what they can and can't do, before you go out and get a contract to spend on it.
And we would be willing to accept whatever, you know, they were willing to offer. You know, it's a day, and that's fine. You know, we'll accept whatever, um, you guys, everybody will go to offer our assets. I'd like your help.
As soon as any structural part would need to be fixed, and then any cosmetic or painting, we may could be in, we may be able to help you. And it is our building, so, you know, reverse back to us if we need.
I realize it's our building, I point this, we have got to follow some kind of protocol. If we keep finding ourselves in this situation where, and I'll throw the county engineer in, but you know, you got a project you want to work on, your project they'll want to work on, my project fancy, your project, Cher's got a project, everybody's got projects. We have got to get better hand coordination on things like this. I know it just happened to be. But this is an ongoing, and actually, that's addressed later on our agenda.
And I agree with you about that. I agree with you one hundred percent on that as well. I think you go with the administration, or if it comes to. We should also take better care of our assets, to be quite honest.
One of the things.
That is my.
One of the things, my, so this is, these people help the district attorney. The district attorney is a part of our county and our responsibility to, uh, protect funds, and that's their field action, so.
We have ten thirty here, I'm not trying to rush you.
I'm just telling you that it's not just them and their group, we have just the district attorney and the district attorney's office that we're trying to assist.
Thank you. The only deadline that we have, that's kind of set aside is, um, at the end of the month, we have to have all the materials, items actually purchased that were modified to be, all of the things that we asked.
This month?
Yes.
Now we talk.
This month.
Thank you for sharing that.
This month.
You got all that we might get from you.
How did you know that's for our?
Yeah.
That is this month.
Then they ask you something about the.
We're just saying, you have to start with projects.
Just make sure everything is purchased, so everything has to be purchased so as we'll have to some bits.
And you did that, you did that, we, 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 yes. So that, the week, all this board needs to do is give them permission. Isn't that an order, Mr. Attorney?
We'd be proud. We would be, we would be proud, um, to get clear on exactly what they're doing versus what the county is responsible for. A window is something that's general maintenance of the county, not, they should be talking about, a window thing, but we can figure that out. Get some order that y'all, I give, email me on figuring out the price of.
We will give the, uh, we need to ask the attorneys, the, give them the authority to work with, um, these, like, um, the projects.
They're authorizing them to proceed.
Proceed with their, uh, grant.
For the renovation of the county building through the grant.
I don't have my paper.
I'm sorry.
Can't, can't, can't make, right. So that clears my, so you just. Thank you very much.
Seventy-six. Did a motion on that.
Oh, yeah. Give the authority to work with the county, um, toward the, you know, rooms, and they'll do a motion, a negotiation, all those layers, and all those motions here. Okay. We have a loving hearing, um, seven. Do you have a number?
Pat? Superbarnister. We were in an urgent, good gathering, uh, not to go forward with your appeal today, but we're asking for the case to be remanded in the planning commission this week. Uh, they've submitted a revised sketch plan, and, um, you know, ready for a final version of that, uh, for the planning commission to review. And then, um, look for the, my intention will provide it, and we'll look for there's a condition of use permit, it's not a, uh, not a, but it's going to be cut, um, to be managed.
Uh, shall I read it? It said, uh, filed by Mountain Dew for Williams Stock and Stock, Co., uh, investment LLC, the planning commission has decided to deny a condition of use permit for a eighty-seven lot, single-family residential subdivision of thirty acres of parcel land, two blocks as identified as site plan, residential subdivision required, uh, condition of use permit for planning commission, the property is currently known as an R1, Loveventi Residential and a one, uh, general agricultural district. The, um, section property is located north of a adjacent to North Swan, but south of the, uh, adjacent to Russell Road and west to, uh, Smith Road, Walter Smith Road. The address on tax person number is zero eight zero six dash six one, uh, two one, dash zero five five, decimal zero zero zero.
And the question of that was, what is, what's the cause of the problem? You're going to remand, if you, uh, send you a request to remand back to the commission? Why did the commission deny? What specific issues?
It was a very unusual situation. We had, uh, four planning commissioners present, two were for it, two were against it. Um, the property is constrained, maybe a third of the property is weapons, and so the planning, a couple of the planning commissioners have a problem with a small lot size, they're two to the minimum possible size, they're smaller than all the other, uh, lots along North Swan Road. And then, um, I have a problem with the double fronted lots, but we discussed that.
They also have some engineering issues, and I believe if you, if you, if you want to discuss it, and then move out, we have engineering issues as well.
Right, so.
And I mean, yes.
Right, so we, we were trying to accommodate the request to, from not, you know, we're interested in delivering various investments, five lots, original plot of eighty-seven lots, or the vast lot of seventy-six lots, so we tried to accommodate those concerns, but also some traffic concerns. There are a lot of points that they brought up, we tried to fix. And so, I think it was part of the, for the planning commission to have a note, like that, so if they didn't have a full group there the day that they voted on last, if they did, they actually voted for twice, once it was given as a motion to the nine, a stupid two, and they had a motion to approve, and not a stupid two, so.
So the subject of the motion, I presume, carried away, so it was approved?
No, actually, the way that I was reading is, is that when it, uh, when it's a tie, it ends with a deny.
It died for lack of majority.
That doesn't make sense, if the motion is to approve, and it's a tie, then the motion, the, the motion would carry. If it's, if the motion is to deny, what you're saying is, it doesn't matter what motion is, if it's a tie, it's a negative. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but maybe you shouldn't have had a motion to deny. You got a motion, you got a, a petition for a condition of use permit, that the accident is either granted or denied that permit. So they failed for a lack of majority, so you didn't get a ruling at all. Basically, it was legally, that is, a denial, which they peeled out a caution, not called me about it. I think they offered it to, to remand it back, so that they could have reset it for another hearing, and probably done the same thing they're going to do now, but they could probably better have poured it, they remanded it back out of full hearing with a, with a tie, uh, that you get the record of.
Yeah, I mean, still, that, uh, that, that's something, maybe I misunderstood parliamentary procedure. My understanding was, for example, if this were voting, and there were one member was missing and it was a tie, then the tie, depending on the, the motion itself, it depend on whether the motion passes or fails.
Well, the motion, as I said, the motion to deny, it should have ended it, there shouldn't have been a vote to grant it, but.
That, that's what I don't understand. What, what was the purpose of the first one, motion to approve it?
It wasn't a purpose, uh, there shouldn't have been a second motion, there should have been a motion to deny, that was the end of it, it didn't pass. It's the same thing in the opposite. But they just voted twice on the same, shouldn't have, if they did. But there's not really a difference between a vote, you're, you're making an application for a condition use permit, and that was denied by a lack of a majority.
That should have been it.
That's it. The motion to grant it is, I don't know, I wouldn't blame it.
So it sounds like we need some parliamentary procedure, let's, but in the meantime, I'll make a motion to remand this back to the planning commission to intervene in the changes that were made since your conversation.
A motion and second discussion?
That's gonna be the seventeen, this, this, I don't know. All right, well, what?
But let me ask you a question, like, I read the next, I read the next. Uh, my understanding was that you presented to the commission that the type of the weapons were going, were going to be general, it was a general property, in common, all in common, as opposed to each individual lot, all part of those weapons, so that should solve that problem at that times, and, and since it was held in common.
Yeah, we think we solved that problem. I have Bobby Hunter here, who is the designer of the renovation, I think, that we, we know the lots going down, and whatever, there were other questions.
Yeah, these lots are smallest ones in the area.
And that gets, that gets a point by doing that, that would go into your government to, but, but for being, having access to two streets each lot, having access.
One thing, if I may comment on that, is these, these businesses about this HOA covenant area is just a problem in the past, and just, we don't have any regulations to deal with it that force these developers, or the, the, or the developers after it's sold, to run into issues where the homeowners do not create the HOAs, nobody managing these covenant areas. Uh, in fact, the work problem had, had dealt with the dam, as you recall, where the county agreed to build a road across the top of the dam, and simply did not accept maintenance of the dam. And when HOA, it was supposed to do it. I don't know whatever happened to it, but we recommended to them, they call a meeting of their HOA, call a meeting, and they should have set the cost of repairing the dam. We eventually closed the road, I don't know what, I guess it just stayed closed, because it was a danger that the dam would undermine the roadway, and the cost for the county to fix it, we could do it, it should have been borne by the owner, but we didn't, you know, get the roadway. These HOAs are bottom of the county, that created as part of the covenants and subdivision, and they never actually physically palmed or creased.
Exactly. Palmed, great, very, all of them.
We had to, we had to get them to call an HOA meeting, it's like World War Three, when we went to the beach out there, I didn't think anybody was going to get out, we were just sitting there. Uh, these are problems, not just for this county, the board, supervisors, attorneys talk about this all the time, it's an issue in all counties. So the solution that is to, for us to dedicate it to conservation, trust, and let them have some, some, for, for, then you will have that HOA problem.
We also have a traffic study, did you say that traffic study was finished yet? It's so beginning on.
So, um, in any event, I know you have a lot to do today, and we have something else brewing out in the Gulf, so I don't want to take up too much of the time, uh, if you can go ahead and go back to the planning commission, make our record, and then we'll be back before y'all, I guess, first thing we have to do.
We may get on the twenty-eight.
I wish, never.
Oh, we'll, we'll be there in a minute.
But I think after, you think that you can, we get all the information. Uh, we have a motion to remand back to planning nation, and we have a second, we have a remand, all those, those things, I think, uh, all those, thank you.
Thank you.
I was on the river, I don't know how many.
So one more thing, the board's court, in the case we had involved in remanding back, which is, uh, we can't remand it back, but we can send it back.
Okay, I'm really sad.
Really? Tam, what was that about?
Please tell us that.
We can send it back, we can't remand it, that's the court's, anyway, still going back.
Okay.
Excuse me, please send it. And how the case stands. Okay.
Thank you, motion one more.
I want to make the motion that I originally stated, kept what I can, I put it aside, in reference to, um, now I just the appropriate motion to bring to the mayor in this place to include four percent of hay rate.
Motion, four percent, uh, give a four percent.
With, with condition that, uh, those operators that would gain any of them, four percent above, will not be included.
We have a motion, I have the second.
Second motion.
All those, I think, I'm not saying I. Oh, she cares. Number ten, headed, under Chance Clark, with the order approved in White Dockett for, um, Mississippi Code of nineteen twenty, um, section nineteen thirteen twenty-seven, motion. Second, I can't get to this question. All those, I think, I'm not saying I, opposing here. Uh, that is the end of the, I'm sorry. Uh, run the election commission, here's number eleven, order to have the Zeta letter, Secretary of State, Oregon, here's the county, uh, cares, grant application, they need to be here for the upcoming election, certain one, uh, three thousand nine hundred and eight, I'll tell you. Second, motion second, all those, there's a problem, I'm not, I'm opposing, or the prison spreading, they excuse contracts, or lease, of the fair ground, with the first five break, with the old fairgrounds, rest of motion. Second, discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, all those, motion here, thirteen, order of freedom transfer in the amount of one, one, one thousand two hundred and eight hundred dollars from zero zero one dash five two two, dash six forty-one, to zero zero one dash five two two, dash nine nineteen, for the purpose of school board for the fair grounds, or any, motion.
Second, discussion. What, what, what's this county, so that was, county?
It's his, um, his, the six forty-one is repairs, building repairs, and a school board is considered a capital product, capital, so he had to transfer money into the capital.
Why did you need a school board?
It's, it's actually a time clock, um, we're, we're having more timed events now, and it's just for a time clock, the one that we have is twenty years old, I'm sorry. The, uh, the current time clock that we have is the twenty-year-old time clock, and it goes in and out all the time, and we can have to spend money on repairs, price decides, or just go ahead and buy a new one, instead of pouring money to it, placing bulbs and let's, stuff.
And that's a time clock, or not a school?
It's a time clock, yes, ma'am.
So we can, for example, minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
This is information, it's in his box, he just transferred.
First discussion, justification, all those, I think, I'm not, I'm opposing, here in Jersey.
I think fifteen through eighteen are standard cases for the planning commission, and we asked.
Motion, measure the assembly division.
Yeah, we all got it. Thank you.
Second, discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, I want to, I want to, break down the insurance, but I'm starting to discuss, purchase the food, or, 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 and, yeah, what do we issue in them?
I didn't see it.
Is he here? Pretty much. Is he in the, uh, fifteen, uh, audience?
I don't know. I didn't see him.
Two minutes, nineteen, under personnel. Amy, do you know anything about that?
I don't have, and there's nothing in the backup, it's probably, just like we normally do, we purchase so many, I think we purchased two hundred and fifty in the past, and, I'm not sure, it's like fifteen dollars or something.
The backup, we don't know how many, we don't know how much.
We'll put it on the twenty-eight.
Move it, move it. Second, second, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, and the purchasing department, number two, for four, three, one, 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 two, three, and stay half right, orders in the purchasing department, but not of August, including motion, question second. Discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, number twenty-one, they have share, right now, share, and, and see what they, on the number of persons, they have, they have a guarantee, and so, man, this year.
Uh, so we have six thirty-one, thirty-six millimeters, seventy-seven miles, fifteen square centimeters, and forty-eight thousand.
We also like, thank you, opportunity to thank this year, propose and organize, and work with people, go over and take care of some of those folks in Louisiana, and, hopefully we won't have to reorganize for us.
Okay, that's a good, yeah, so that's talking about.
No words left.
No, I didn't think. We got, I'll, I'm sorry, we'll be straight again. Number twenty-two, is order, acknowledge the Zeta letter, to the city, to help you out, fifty, maybe twenty dollars from the, um, government, thank you so much, fund for the Harrison County Long Forest, Training Academy Project, motion, second.
Discussion, um, this is the same one that you had before, right? Or is this an addition?
It's an addition.
Oh, this is a new? So you don't need another twenty percent advantage, that's covered?
I'm pretty sure.
It's going there.
This is an addition, this is.
Yeah. Twenty-two.
This is actually for the, for the administrative building, fair, it's, it's, we're thinking that.
Wait, a motion, second?
The other one's mine.
Discussion.
The other one's mine.
Discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, number twenty-three, is order, bringing, may this decline, is worth it, motion, second.
Second.
All those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, and, 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 mainly order, uh, approved on August ten, twenty-nine, twenty-four, dash thirteen, is ready to include Chief Ron Fuller, Harrison County Sheriff's Office, on the selection date for the R and B, received September one, twenty-three, from industrial design, and project management for the long forest, and forest, the training academy, motion, second. Discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, and, 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 and transfer, twenty-nine, uh, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, or ninety-five cents, you know, from zero zero one dash two, eleven dash four sixty-eight, to zero zero one dash two, zero zero dash nine two, uh, to correct the error in payment of previous claims, as listed, motion, second. So, discussion, all those, I think, I'm not saying I, I'm opposing, here, number twenty-six, is order, except the best book, one paper, in the county, uh, four hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars for soil, cement base, the used in the rock track and driving pad, at the Harrison County Offshore Settlement, Training Academy, has certified, and, and, Alexander.